Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call to order our city council workshop of January 3rd. The second item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the availability of special use determined to allow a storage building in the CBD.
Yeah.
You taking the lead on this?
Well, I think I did research on it.
Okay.
Had an application about a so go to do a warehouse storage in the CBD district. Central Business District. Cody had noticed it, I think, for a special use permit. Correct me if I'm wrong. And the night of the meeting, I think I got asked to look at the code and I looked at the code and there's nothing in the code, our zoning code, that allows a warehouse in the CBD either as a permitted use or as a special use. So unless you change the ordinance, there will not be the warehouse or storage facility in the CBD district. You're the policymakers, if y'all decide you want to do that, then we need to change or amend the zoning ordinance. And the amendment would be go through the planning commission and to you for final approval, but it would be to allow a storage unit or warehouse in CBD with a special use permit only. I don't think, you know, I'm guessing now, but I'm assuming if you wanted it at all, you would not want it to be permitted use because that means then it could go anywhere in the CBD. This, if you do it with a special use, then you can look at it on a case by case basis. And if you decide you don't want it at all, then you leave the ordinance just like it is.
What was the date of the ordinance, do you remember?
November 2014.
November 2014.
Is my bad. Is there any reason to change it because I haven't paid?
The only reason you change it is if you want to allow that use in the CBD. If you don't, then there's no reason to change it.
So is this, okay, is this because there's a real case that there's somebody wanting to do it or are we just abstractly, okay, there's?
Somebody wants to do it.
So what are the, are there people outside this group really wanting these folks there? Has anybody looked at, like, planning, has planning looked at yet?
Not done, no.
Well, planning.
Not with a special use.
Planning did because we didn't realize that it wasn't allowed in the Central Business District or that the Central Business District had its own zoning. Planning had already reviewed this application and approval.
Okay, so they were, that's what I was trying to get. They thought it was a good thing, but we need to change the ordinance to do it.
Well, they, they thought they had the, at that meeting, everyone thought they had the right to do it. And then it came to you for, because you're the final authority or the, really the authority.
But it was really a moot point.
At, when it got to you, it turned out it was a moot point because they, they really didn't have the authority to approve a special use permit or recommend approval. And you don't have the ability, as things sit today, to approve it if you want it. And so the policy decision is number one, do you want it at all? If the answer to that is no, we don't want them, then you leave the ordinance like it is. If the ordinance is, we might on a case by case basis, then you do a special use. And of course, the other one is open up completely and say it's permitted use, just like anybody else.
And they're two different things. We, we're saying change the ordinance is one thing. We don't have to give a special use to this person or this applicant.
You can't. You don't have the, you don't have.
No, I'm saying if we change the ordinance, that even after that, we don't have to give it to these guys.
No, still case by case basis.
That's, yeah.
And that gives you the right to look at the one that is filed. Right now, you don't have the authority to even look at it.
That's what I'm saying, there's two different issues, so that's.
Well, if we're trying to, down the road, if we try to attract businesses, retail into the Central Business District, don't you think that there's going to be a need for additional building space that is going to be defined as warehouse? I mean, we've, we've got some of that already that's been built. I assume that's why the, why the resolution.
If you put warehouses downtown, then you can't put business downtown.
That's true.
I mean, warehouses belong on the edges of town. They don't belong downtown. Off you say.
Are we talking about just downtown? CBD just downtown?
Central Business District.
Central Business District.
Capital store.
Capital store district.
And I think when they wrote the ordinance, they probably thought of that and that's why it's not in there. And that's who wants to have a garage or, or a storage units in, first off, we're historic town. We bill ourselves as historic town. That's where we get our, I think a lot of our revenue from tourists, tourism comes in. I don't feel that we need to have that kind of thing there. If they build something, it needs to be something of a retail nature. If they put a garage in the back of it, if it's going to have residential upstairs, I don't feel there would be a problem with that. But just actual storage units or a warehousing type of thing in the Central Business District or even in the historic district shouldn't go there. There's plenty of other places if you go.
Seems pretty much out of place.
Yeah.
No, but change of the ordinance, we can say it's not just a warehouse. We're probably, just we could make a special use permit for other things as well, right? Or are we talking about only for warehouses?
Well, it's all talking about tonight.
Well, I know, because there's two rest issues. Somebody wants to do, an applicant wants to do this, but yet there's an ordinance. How broad is this ordinance? It's only broad enough to allow this one group or any warehouse like it? Or are we talking about almost anything we can do a special use?
We're talking about anything in CBD, if you do a special use. You, under the CBD, you've got CBD up here and you go down this whole list of uses and it says either no, it's not allowed, or it's got a CU, it's a special use, conditional use, or it's got a P, absolutely permitted. This one has none at all.
Right. I guess you can beat me tonight.
Be you.
Hey, you're okay.
Maybe. We were told you weren't coming.
I know.
But I think that, I think they thought about that when they probably wrote the ordinance originally.
Well, I don't remember or was, I don't even know if it was part of it, but it appears they specifically exempted the CBD district and intentionally left it out, not wanting it as a use. But that was then, this is now, you can do whatever you want.
So they exempted for, for any special use permitted?
No.
I think we're opening, I think we're opening Pandora's box. If we, if we change the ordinance or allow something in, now you're, if one goes in, a lot of other will want to go in.
Once you start down that path, I'll promise you, they'll, they'll be coming.
It's a slippery slope, it'll be.
This is just like we had to discuss with the, the storage units out in South Guthrie.
Yeah.
It's just the same thing. Once one starts, sure they all come. And you'll never stop it.
Unless, unless y'all tell us, we're not going to draw an ordinance or change the ordinance.
Well, they're going to go to Board of Adjustment and go for a variance anyway, probably.
You can't, you can't get a variance on use for adjustments.
Really? I thought that's what they do is zoning changes. Zoning, zoning.
You do zones, they don't do zones.
And there, once we say, once we say no.
They can adjust standards.
Standard.
But they can't adjust, they can't.
They can't do a variance?
They can't, they can't grant a variance to, that's in contradiction to your zoning ordinance. So if it says you can't do it, they can't come up with it.
All right, shut that down, next subject.
One, two, three, let's get out of here.
Exactly. We're done with that, we're moving on.
These are less than a minute, he shuts it down already.
Sounds like it's already happened.
Well, I do want clarification though. Ed, you said something about if there's an apartment upstairs and they want to build a, a garage or something in the back of their building, what is the difference between that and what, what this group is asking?
Because it's specifically used for parking for that specific residential space. This is warehousing that is not, pertains to a, say, residence or actual building.
Is it because of its location?
Well, the front facade would be commercial. It would be something open to the public. It would be there. You would possibly have residential upstairs to keep autos and things off the city streets for, and keep that open for business and for commerce.
Because I know this is going to come up.
But the appearance issue is something that Historic Preservation.
And then they would, Historic Preservation would deal with that.
We're dealing with what is the function of the space.
I mean, we actually dealt with that with the Pincushion Building with, over there on First and Oklahoma, where there are two garages now that were put in the back. And of course, it fits the building, it's vetted out, it went through Historic Preservation, and it, again, it keeps cars off the street. It'd be something in the similar nature of that. And I think that that Historic Preservation Commission still has purview over whether allowing that or not. So even without the ordinance change or anything like that. But then that comes with infill building. If new infill building comes in, that's, I think, is what's talking about now. And infill should be more of a retail nature than any kind of warehousing or anything like that.
I just don't see retail going over there. I'm going to have to, I thought we were done with this, I didn't jump in on that.
Well, actually, I, you know, but retail probably will eventually go there because that's going to be one of the main avenues coming into town. Once Second Street is shut down, that's going to be one of the main streets coming in other than Division. So that gets us into the cap, you know, gets us into the downtown business.
Well, that's the city parking lot right there to the south of it, right?
No, I believe that's the banks. I think that's the banks, Brian.
Just to the south of the?
Yep.
On the corner of, the northwest corner of First and Cleveland.
Across the American Legion.
Across the American Legion. That parking lot right there, that's not city? I thought that was city.
No, that's the banks.
They did for a while.
That's the banks.
And, okay.
But I think you raised, I think you do raise a good point. I think that once the 33 is completed, that actually the potential for retail probably goes up.
Opens up.
Yeah. Certainly visibility, I would think.
Well, you're not going to see that.
A real good idea not to put something in there until you see how it's going to happen.
You won't see that from 33. There's no way you're going to see that from 33.
When you drive down the street, you can see it. And they're going to widen it out, so it's, it's visible.
Because you've got the Hertzels metal buildings right beneath this side of it.
But it's still visible. If you, if you drive down, I drive down it every day.
Well, anyway, I don't know that we answered your question.
Well, and I don't know what, to remember the application was that got us to this point, what they were voting, but.
Stay the same, it should be a storage building just like.
Well, the request is if you stop the car.
Storage for autos and other personal property.
Okay, but how big the building is.
How big?
Sixty by forty.
But it's not in conjunction with residential above. So I think you can make a difference.
No, I think it's replacing what was there.
If it's a garage, if it's a garage behind the building to serve a residence above, I don't see that as being an issue. You all would have to bless it, the historical.
Right, it would have to go through HP.
You'd have to go through the look and whatnot, but the use, I don't think, that to me is not what you're talking about for a special use for storage.
Is that your building?
Yeah.
That you're wanting to do that on?
No, I'm just here from the planning department.
Oh.
I believe the applicant is going to bring up some examples that's taken place in the, in the Central Business District.
Since 14?
Mm-hmm, or probably.
Really?
Well, yeah. I know that he was going to the one time that we didn't discuss this. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Well, could you have, here's just a little more discussion on it. Could we have a storage area that looks nice, like it totally preserves the outside of a building? Just, just a thought. And if that's the case, you could say, well, you could have this use, but it has to look at these, it has to be these standards only to preserve the historical nature of that building and, if that makes sense. If not, if you believe not, then that's fine. I'm just wondering, it might be a possibility.
Well, that's what the, the HP commission would do.
That's what HP does.
That's what they would do, but I'm just saying is, I mean, if we did an ordinance, we could say, has the totally.
If it was to be passed, it would have to be that.
Yeah, yeah. So even with that, you guys would be critical of having that.
I would not.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. I would not be. I, I think that, for instance, in this particular instance, what is the visual now? Visual is a ten sided, ten sided building.
And that visual, I mean, tell you something, it's not going to go away anytime soon.
That's the visual.
For years and years and years.
So how, how does that, how does that assist us in what we want to present as Guthrie? Doesn't, doesn't at all.
See, I don't have a problem with it either if it eliminated and prop, and personal property. I mean, if you were going to have a collector car showcase with the big giant picture window, then there's your car sitting on a pedestal and have a bunch of those around, that would be awesome. But then you get into this personal property, which is, I'm going to store my daughter's entire house in there.
Yeah, and I don't think that's the intent.
Or lease it out to somebody else.
Or lease it out to who's going to store their whole house in there. That's the kicker.
I still think it needs to be geared more to a retail for tax generating purposes for Guthrie instead of just having something there that you just put a storage in.
I agree with that.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that.
But I can assure you this, I'm not going to want to build any kind of retail there with the ten stuff to the north of me. Neither are you.
No, but eventually that probably will, again, depending on price and depending on economics, that will eventually go away.
Until you know what 33 looks like. It's hard to judge, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought you got the quietus on this 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
I did, but then it jumped back up to a debate, a discussion.
We're still, we're continuing.
Because I'm, because I'm really not against it to the degree that others are, but if it were done properly, but I'm against storage in its own right.
But the property, the properly, the aesthetics of it is, is the Historic Preservation, Preservation Commission's responsibility.
That's a secondary question though.
It is.
Do you want storage in the down, in the CBD to begin with?
That's the problem.
And if you don't, then you're done.
And I think that that's where it needs to sit.
Well, I think that what he's going to rise is what Kim is trying to point to is that, hey, look at all these other places that have storage downtown.
But they're existing buildings.
I understand, and that's the kind of where this town's in. I mean, I hear from the people out there that want metal buildings. Jeff's got a metal building, why can't I have one? Okay, and I'm going like, well, I hear you. You know?
That's the grandfather clause.
Most of those, most of those storages were there long before HP was there, and that's why HP was put into place and why this became, that's why it became an issue and why the ordinance was written. So you're right, it is grandfathered, but when it goes away, it won't be allowed to be put back.
Big questions, when it goes away. The, but the, the principal thing is, do we want, do we want to approve something that will allow warehouses in the Central Business District?
I don't think so. I think there's a lot of other better areas to put warehousing.
South Guthrie, North Guthrie.
You know? It's just like the whole metal building thing. I still can't get my arms around that because I drive up and down Division and they're everywhere.
All over.
Okay, and they cropped up in the last two years.
They are.
And that is planning. And that comes from the planning department.
Exactly.
And because of the ordinances and the way they're written, you either need to be rewritten or changed, but that's.
Well, let's not get into that issue.
Yeah, let's not get into that one.
Okay, my sense is that the, that there's a general agreement that we do not want warehouse functioning, increase warehouse functioning in the Central Business District.
Now, let me ask a question because this is a potential problem.
I thought we were all through with it.
No, because I see a problem coming. Okay, so what if I bought the firehouse? I wasn't councilman, I bought the firehouse and I wanted to use it for storage. You can't tell me what I can and can't do with that. It's already there.
True.
Okay? What if I wanted to buy the Sears, the JCPenney building or the Sears building and use it for storage? You can't tell me I can't. Okay? And so that's a problem, I think, in the way all of this is being done.
But this is new construction.
A new construction is another whole deal, I get it. Okay, believe me, I get it. But, you know, I can look around as we all can, and there's storage in all of these buildings.
Well, every retail has some storage for inventory, but that, that it was developed as a retail establishment. And I don't think you can take the, the two instances you gave and go in there and start renting out storage space. I think we could shut them down if they tried to do that.
If you tried to open it as a storage.
Yeah, it was a fire station. It was not a warehouse. And that was a Penny's or whatever it was, a retail establishment, not a run out warehouse space. So I think, I mean, I think we could legally do what we need.
And there you go.
You know, I make a good point, but I think if we found out about, particularly if they came in and they needed to bring the building up to code for any reason, then we're not going to let that happen.
I'm just saying, we need to get off of the words, people using it for storage, because this whole town is used for storage.
We're talking about primary use.
For the most part, stuff.
Primary use warehouse.
Huh?
We're talking about a primary use.
Right, that's where we need to keep it. And we need to just shut it down if that's what we're going to do. Back to shutting it down.
I think we are ready to move to three.
Beat the dead dog to death.
Discussion of parking issues. John, is this yours?
Something comes up, you've got to be prepared.
Okay, well, I wrote the list letter and I sent it to council, and there's some various topics on it, but it deals with, Guthrie's ordinance for parking behind, let's say, stop signs and crosswalks is more permissive than the state. There's actually a, and you probably, I think it's in your packet, that has the state law and the, the local ordinance. It's basically verbatim except for on item seven, and you can see I talked about item seven, they changed it to 10 feet at one point. So this has created some problems. I broke it down kind of in four areas. One is legal liability issues because of this, safety issues because of this, technical issues because of this, and then talking about maybe a compromise. So legal liability. Some of the problems are, so we're talking about having vehicles that are especially large vehicles that are blocking signage or site triangles in a intersection. So some of legal liabilities by not doing anything is, one, we have no proper, we don't have the proper language to do anything about anything like that. That's one of our problems. It's not consistent with state law. There's potential legal liability issues. Where, when I talked to the city planner Brett Jones in Stillwater, he said that he, you know, he talks to planners all around the state. It's the only state that is 10, or city that allows 10 feet behind a stop sign. Everywhere else is 30 feet. They basically copied and pasted the, the ordinance. And state law basically, remember the chapter 47, title 11 of Oklahoma State statutes, basically says that you can't have your state law being more permissive or inconsistent than, or your ordinance are, your ordinance can't be more permissive than the state law.
Or what?
Or what?
Or what?
It shouldn't be. It's, they're not supposed to be.
Or what?
Yeah, what's the consequence?
I mean, you made a point that they're not supposed to be, so what's the, what's the?
You know, I, that's a great question because they don't say right below it, here's a consequence. It is kind of a general, I don't know exactly what the, what the outcome.
No, they don't, they don't provide consequences.
So we probably need a.
Part of the problem in what? Part of the problem in what, and I saw the letter and you know my response to the letter and we won't go there, but part of the problem that I have with what you're trying to accomplish here is twofold, okay? A, part of it's personal, okay, big time, okay? And B, when you drive around these residential neighborhoods, and I happen to have owned real estate in there, as you do and others do, okay? You can't, you have to have that parking spot up to 10 feet to the stop sign because there's not, there's a lot of houses in this, in this town that have only off-street, off-premise parking. They don't have a driveway. They don't have a garage. Okay, so they have to park in front of their house. And if you're limiting that and you've got four or five houses in a string, okay, you're limiting that, you're putting, you're pushing people to the next block over to be able to park their vehicle. And I can give you many, many instances of.
Let me give a response to that. One is then therefore we're the only city in the whole state that has that issue.
I don't know about that.
I mean, if that's the case.
I don't know about that.
We're the only city has that exception.
I don't know about that. I know that we have that issue.
We have the issue, but so do probably other cities. There's like several hundred cities in Oklahoma, a lot of them have that issue. A lot of them have issues of parking, I get that. This is about safety. And as you saw in the stats, if you read this, we had 44 accidents downtown between '04 and '10. And from '10 to '16, and this is city information, it was 167 accidents downtown. If you look at the 2010 report, okay, it actually says on the bottom, one of the problems is the proliferation of large trucks in the downtown was not something they anticipated when they create this ordinance. So that's the problem. Now, we're not supposed to have 10 feet if you go by state law, okay? A compromise would be, in my opinion, would be this, limit the size of the vehicle. So we're not talking about huge trucks or passenger vans. So it's, here's the problem, 2000, 2010, they had all, they had these studies saying parking is an issue downtown. The, the site triangles are a problem downtown. We're having accidents downtown.
But you're not talking about.
But hold on, let me finish. And what the outcome is, we kicked the can twice, right? We kicked the can because it was easy, because why? People get upset because you say, oh, you're going to get rid of 62 spaces. Well, if we compromise and say, look, let's actually just question what can be there. Large trucks and vans cannot be in these corners, then you get rid of no spaces downtown. What you do is you just maybe have a stamp, we can talk about some of the technical issues, put a stamp or something, something that would designate if people know what this is.
Well, John, you know, the, the accident issue, the numbers increase in accidents, there's not necessarily a direct correlation there because you don't know where all, where those accidents happened.
They'll find out.
They could have happened anyplace, not just on the corners where you've got people parked.
And you know, another thing, I've been, I've been here 22 years-ish and I'm trying to figure one time that I had an issue leaving downtown. I'm talking about downtown proper, getting out onto Division where I had a problem seeing because of a truck or something parked at the end cap.
Also, you're someone who's from Guthrie, and so therefore, people, how many, yeah, yeah, you get used to the street corners. You go, oh, hey, you know, it's more safe here, wherever, I go right or left. We are a, a town that's trying to bring in sales tax to this town. I mean, it's bringing people who are not used to Guthrie, and they're the ones who are like, oh, I'm not familiar with this and getting, potentially getting the accidents. I would love to see a breakdown of our 167 people. You know, here's, here's the thing, here's, we should have people over parking as number one. Two, how many people have to, I would like to see how many people died, how many people were injured, went to the hospital. I would love to see, you know, how many are just fender benders? Because even if one or two people die, that's a lot of people to die just because we need parking on the street corners to park anywhere we want because we just love parking over people, safety. As a city councilman, our charter actually says, and I cite the charter, that one of the things, we're supposed to protect lives and the health of citizens in Guthrie. And that's my charge as a councilman. That's what, that's a charter. That's what the charter says we're doing. We're not, I don't, I looked on the chart, didn't say push for parking. We've got to maximize parking, and that's why we were elected, Jeff, to have more parking downtown, right? I don't remember that in the charter. You go, find it, please. But this is serious because we're talking about people's safety.
Wouldn't you think the painted lines and the definition of the parking spots, face Wouldn't you think the painted lines and the definition of the parking spots, if, if, face it, well, if you do an aerial of downtown, our line paint is wore out. That's a Maxine thing.
Yep.
Okay, it's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, it's non-existent. As a matter of fact, I got a lot of people hitting me on it. Why aren't we painting the, the lines in downtown proper?
We should.
Why aren't we defining where the parking spots are?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the chief, are there, uh, death-related incidents due to large vehicles parked at the end caps of the roads within ten feet of the intersection, uh, in the last six years?
I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, because you cited that, and I wanna see, out of those hundred and sixty-some accidents, was that a kid hitting his bike, jumping, falling off of the curb?
That's a city.
Downtown, are we already addressing this with the bump outs? Downtown, it's already a separate issue?
That's a separate, yeah, we're talking about.
Just a vision.
They're fixing that part.
Yeah, that's, that's supposedly gonna be fixed there, but see, what the problem is, you're, 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 you're pushing this into the neighborhoods, okay? And the neighborhoods, uh, for a fact, I've got two different houses that I know of, okay, that my kids are living in, okay? That they have to park on the street, okay, and they have to be within ten feet of that stop, not them. But if the neighbor's not within ten feet of the stop sign, he's gonna be taking their spot, they're not gonna have a spot, people behind them aren't gonna have a spot. Somebody's parking on the block over.
What type of vehicles?
Toyota, Camry type stuff?
There you go. All I'm saying is not have a big old truck there.
So, that goes back to, that goes back to the, that goes back to the personal side of it.
Chief, is there an issue with enforcement, if, if, for instance, uh, I think what I'm hearing is that the, the first parking spot, ten feet from the curb, from the, uh, from the, the end of the curb, uh, from the corner, uh, would be compact car only. Uh, is there, is there a enforcement issue with that?
There's, there's a, a couple of issues that, that I found in, in the proposal. Part, part of, part of the problem with the proposal right now is, um, we, we've got lists of passenger vans, trucks, SUVs, or any vehicles of comparative or larger size. And within our ordinances and within state statute, there is absolutely no definition, except on trucks. And state statute defines it as, uh, every motor vehicle constructed or used for the transportation of property not falling within the definition of truck tractor, trailer, or semi-trailer. That's pretty broad definition. So, I don't know what you would be banning from the corners. And then, I think you're gonna be running into some issues, because we're making the argument that we wanna follow state statutes on big trucks, but we don't wanna follow state statute on small cars.
Can I say something real quick to that? You know why? Cause I floated this idea, and everybody was like, oh, I don't wanna have that. So, my idea was, let's compromise somehow, so it's, we don't lose parking spaces, because we've kicked the can in two thousand, we kicked the can in two thousand and ten. Those are city reports saying we should do something, and politically, they both got stalled. So, this is why I thought, hey, a compromise would be, let's limit size of certain vehicles rather than all vehicles. So, it preserves those parking spaces. I'm very into changing definitions, whatever is easier for the police to deal with. How you print it, how you, uh, visualize that, that's, you know, the police, you guys are technical, do, you know, just, how do we make that work? And that's it, that, you know, how?
Probably the next, probably the biggest thing is, if you look downtown, especially downtown, uh, on the corners, probably eighty to ninety percent of your parking is handicap on the corner. Well within thirty feet, um, twenty-eight to fourteen feet. And most, by far, the size of those vehicles are going to be vans and SUVs. Uh, to accommodate wheelchairs, crutches, canes, and the like. So, to accommodate this thirty-foot rule, you're gonna move those spots two down. And to be in compliance with ADA and the like, you're gonna cut ramps in the middle of blocks and mark them. It's going to cost the city a lot of money and time. I mean, I'm not saying it cannot be done. Uh, but, to do that, the spot immediately adjacent to the new handicap spot is going to have to be vacant, so that they can put their wheelchair out and access the new ramp. Because you cannot put the wheelchair into the roadway to drive them up to the corner to get to access to the curb.
So, you're saying currently, uh, all these sixty-two spots are actually all ADA?
I'm not saying all of them are. I'm saying approximately eighty to ninety percent of them are.
So, you're saying that all these on the, on, next to it is a blank spot?
Well, what's, what, what, what it is right now on the corner is you've got the crosswalk. But you move them two, two spaces down to be in compliance with your thirty-foot rule, you're gonna have a parking spot on either side.
So, you're really losing two spots?
Losing a lot.
Well, you're gonna lose one. I, I don't think you'd have to have both sides done. Um, but, I mean, the spot on the corner that's handicapped now, you're gonna say no trucks, SUVs, whatever, however you define it. You're gonna come two spots down, put your handicap spot in, and one spot on either side of it's gonna have to be vacant. And then you're gonna have to bring the city in, cut ramps, so, you know, your, your mobility impaired people can have access to sidewalks and stuff like that.
So, currently, all those spots have ramps.
Already made them.
All those current ones, we're all ADA compliant.
I'm not saying all of them do.
Are we totally ADA compliant downtown then?
Yeah.
I'm saying a hundred percent?
The majority of them do. I'm not saying all of them do.
I'd say you're probably ninety-eight percent not ADA compliant.
Well, and then there's a, there's a problem right there. That's.
Okay, so now you're gonna go to a hundred percent. I, I don't, I don't.
My, my point is, we're not.
I'm the police, I'm just, I'm just.
I get, I get telling you.
Sounds like we've already compromised with the, where the parking spaces are. I mean, not in the past, it's just kinda hard to regulate that. The reason, that's the reason the, the handicaps are at the corners, because of the cost involved in putting it in and the space that we have available, which, I mean, we're dealing with a nineteenth-century town, as it was well put with the bump outs. It was designed around horses and carriages and things, with people walking. It wasn't designed around automobiles.
So, why don't we paint the stripes on the roads? Why don't we define with stripage, new paint, the stripes with the parking and the whole deal? And I think that you'd been, maybe we note the handicap spot here or there. I don't know that we have a dedicated handicap spot in this town, do we?
Yeah, two rounds.
Yeah, I guess there's some over the post office.
One right out here.
Right here, no, I know that, but I'm being.
So, you're saying we have two?
Once you start getting into downtown.
Every block has, every block, both sides.
Has two?
Has at least two.
Okay, I didn't realize.
One each end, one at each corner.
Yeah.
Once a year.
We are required to keep them as close to the ADA ramp as possible, ADA standards.
And I think you're required to have one in twenty-five spaces.
Yes.
In nineteen ninety-seven, ordinance number thirty-three-one was passed, where the city adopted the manual of uniform traffic control devices. And that takes care of all of those distances and the heights of signs and all of that. But, here again, we're an old city, and we've got sightline problems from buildings that we can't really do anything about.
Oh, I did all the sight distance studies that you guys are looking at there on that. I have them in folders here. Um, there's not a corner in our downtown, our central business district, that our buildings do not come out into that sight distance, blocking the view of the oncoming traffic. Your sight distance actually, actually starts a hundred and fifteen feet prior to approaching the intersection.
So, the buildings are all in the way?
Yes.
All of our buildings, which is, relates back to the grandfather clause. I mean, they're, they were there years and years ago.
So, we should make it worse, uh, and not make any better, and we should ignore it, so we should kick the can.
We also have the parking problems, which relates back to the, the ordinance that we recently adopted, the, on the manual of uniform traffic control devices, which goes back to telling us, we're not supposed to have anything twenty feet from the crosswalk. That should be hash marked off. If there's a fire plug, you're not supposed to have anything ten feet from that fire plug. It, it also addresses numerous, numerous standards that we have to follow. Um, from, all the way from the size of our signs to the height of our signs, it's the Federal Highway Administration guidelines.
So, we're in compliance with all that now, is what you're saying?
We're not in compliance with.
Any of it?
Any of it.
Now, in twenty-ten, we did amend the, the ordinance, the, the parking prohibited ordinance, and added, except in parking spaces officially marked, because at that time, we weren't in compliance with our current ordinance. And so, that's when we did the study again, reviewed it, and that was, that was how we. We did kick the can, but we didn't address the issue.
Are the bump outs gonna address that issue with division?
That is where we definitely want to be involved in the design plan, once they get to doing the actual design and layout on the plan.
So, that it does?
Yes.
That we make sure that the new construction is compliant.
Right.
That we do stay twenty feet from a crosswalk, if there's a fire plug, we do stay that ten feet from it.
I would like, we, I think we're moving in the, I think we're moving in the right direction, clearly. And I think that, I think one of the proposals that I'm hearing John make is that we take that last parking spot, continue as parking spot, but, but modify the vehicle size that can, can sit in there, uh, length and height. Um, and, and I think that has some merit. I think that's a step forward in trying to, trying to be a safer community. I just don't know how enforceable it is, that's why I was asking the question. Because when you say compact car, some, you know, people's definition of compact car, you could change. I, you see signs around, you see signs around in a number of places, compact car only. You see it in, in parking garages, all the time.
You, you see it in parking garages, but you don't see it in residential neighborhoods, okay? And so, now, move this to the residential neighborhoods, okay? Cause you have to, unless you're gonna just do it in downtown historical district. Okay, so now you're in the residential neighborhood, you're driving a pickup truck, you don't have a driveway, okay? Your house is at the corner, okay? You have to park there. And if you don't get up enough within ten feet or so of that stop sign, your husband isn't gonna be able to park, okay? No, I'm serious. Okay, and so, someone's moving a block away at that point, and that's ridiculous.
And there'd have to be signage.
Absolutely ridiculous.
That would be just astronomically expensive, because.
If you did what?
You'd have to have signage.
Everywhere.
Every, it'd be four signs per, every street corner.
Gosh, then we could do like apartments, and you could have a signed parking.
Exactly.
Two, two cars free.
This is your spot.
No one says you have to have a sign. You can have it, something printed on there, so it's on the street, and you do things like that. And I'm not saying subcompact, I'm just saying not giant vehicles, not, you know, and subcompact is a di, it's like, we're talking, I'm talking about none of these. You're talking about, well, only these. It doesn't have to be subcompact, it's just not giant trucks. I mean, why would you have to allow the largest trucks?
Says no giant trucks here.
Yeah, I mean.
No commercial vehicles.
No commercial vehicles? What's commercial count?
Well, I could have a truck that's commercial, and it's a pickup truck. That's a commercial vehicle. You can have a car that's.
Commercial vehicle.
You can have a commercial vehicle on a vehicle, on a car.
There you go. No commercial vehicles over two tons. That would be simple.
Over one.
I'd say a two-ton is a big truck.
Yeah, it is.
I think we really do need to try to stick to the ordinance where we follow the manual of the Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Whether it's downtown, central business district, whether it's residential or not, a lot of time, when you get to the, the manual of, of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it breaks everything, every style of intersection down, whether it's controlled intersection, uncontrolled intersection, sidewalks, pedestrian traffic, no pedestrian traffic. We have a guideline that we have to follow that way. And I know all the issues that we've got and all the concerns that we have in, in the areas. If we have that identified sidewalk where pedestrians are cro, crossing the, the street, we're directing them there, then I think we need to follow the standards to keep vehicles from parking right up on top of that crosswalk for the safety of the people that's coming out in the street, that we're directing out in the street.
And you're saying we don't, not doing that now, but we should?
We are not doing that.
And I can tell you why. It's because they've wanted to utilize every inch for parking, because it wasn't too long ago, a big revenue source was metered parking. And they wanted to put a meter in just every opportunity they had. They didn't care close to us to the corner.
We have any meter.
Well, we're talking downtown, but what about, we talking about in residential neighborhoods?
I think.
You're gonna put crosswalks in every residential neighborhood?
We do have.
That would be smart.
We do have crosswalks in some of the residential. Whether, on the manual of uniform traffic controls, it, it states in there, marked or unmarked crosswalks in, in a residential area, your standard still is, you stay four foot minimum, the backside of that crosswalk.
And so, how far are you from, so how far are you from the stop sign at that point?
Your stop sign is a minimum four foot on the backside of the crosswalk.
So, you're eight feet from those intersections?
And we have stop signs that are on the opposite side of the crosswalks.
So, what are you saying? How far is a vehicle then? We follow the federal standards. How far would a vehicle be from a stop sign?
It'd be twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Yep.
That's more than we are now, though.
And that keeps any vehicle out of that side triangle.
Well, can we go twenty feet? That would follow, you know, the guidelines, federal guidelines.
Well, perhaps we should find out specifically what, what you're, where you're speaking of, just downtown or the entire city? Or just the historical area, or, because if you define it as the entire city, we're talking about, ooh.
I'll give you an example. Uh, let me give a prime example right here, right now. We got a, we got a thank you letter for this from Justin Portman, okay? He actually owns a house two down from one that I just sold, okay? He's on the corner. He has to park right to the corner, and does.
Is there a stop sign there?
Okay, yes. Okay, there's a crosswalk, I mean, it's an intersection, okay? And so, but I got the thank you letter from him for discussing this, okay? And so, because you know why we got the thank you letter? I don't think he's thinking the residential neighborhoods.
He's thinking downtown.
He's thinking downtown proper, okay? And that's what we've gotta decipher. Are we talking, just like she said, downtown proper?
We have to define the area.
Where are we talking?
Well, maybe you start with the downtown.
Yeah, I mean, that's a start. I mean, I, I'm for something here. I just think where we're going, we're kicking the can by doing nothing.
I don't think we're kicking the can. This is the first time it's ever come up.
I'm just saying that we kicked it in two thousand, and we kicked it in two thousand and ten.
We didn't kick it.
I'm not saying we, I'm not saying we, but you know, you have constituents out there, they're not gonna differentiate council for council. They're gonna say the city's been kicking the can. And I, I, we, I thought we, our theme was, we're not kicking the can anymore. But I think not doing anything, that's exactly what we're doing. I think we should go by the federal standards, at the very least, which is twenty feet. That's what our experts told us we should do.
He's at eight feet.
He said twenty feet.
He's four feet.
He said twenty feet.
He said the stop, stop sign is four foot at the back, I mean, at the backside of the crosswalk, and then four feet from there, right? So, you're eight feet from the back of the crosswalk?
Twenty.
Yes.
Or are you twenty?
There's the intersection, there's the.
Types of intersection.
Types of intersections, different styles.
See, I, I think if we started downtown, made a, made an effort to reduce the size of the vehicles on the corner with signage.
All right, here it is, right here. This is urban intersection.
Brian, Brian, are you listening to me?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Uh, I, I think that that is a, a, a reasonable first step. I think we can see if it has any impact on accidents that occur a period of time after that, uh, uh, after that step has been taken, to see if we want to move it further.
And we'll see if we can break down this current accidents and see how many are deaths, how many are actually serious, how many are bumpers, you know?
It doesn't, it doesn't, uh.
So, we have more information.
Reduce the number of parking spaces. It reduces the, the, the type of vehicle that can park in those end spaces. Uh, and we can see if it has any effect on the safety of our citizens.
And, uh, handicapped, it would be exempt from that? Because that's where a lot of the corner parking places are.
That's, I.
I mean, that's where the corner parking spaces are, that you would have to have a smaller vehicle, and that is the ones that have the vans and the fast.
That is a challenge. That is a challenge. I think, I, I don't think they should be exempt. Cause I think what we're saying is, the, the high-profile vehicle reduces the, the, the line of sight. Uh, and the length, the, the, the long, a long.
So, where are you gonna put the handicapped people?
I, I guess we'd have to move them down two steps.
But I, but I heard a lot of things go on here, and one thing that I wanna ask you, John, is, because this is your proposal. You know, you've mentioned kicking the can, upsetting citizens, all this. Have you polled the citizens? Do you have backup data to, to support that?
All I have.
Cause the ones I've talked to aren't for this.
Once I, I have talked to, they are, and we have two studies from two thousand, two thousand and ten, said it's a problem. I mean, that, it.
I'm talking about the residential neighborhoods. I'm not talking about downtown. Talk about in the res, I'm talking about in the residential.
I'm talking about downtown, and right now, we're talking about downtown, and I'm fine with that.
So, then we'll just leave it to downtown, then?
I don't have a problem with that. It's moving somewhere forward. That's what I care about, instead of not doing anything, cause it's complicated and whatnot. So, let's do something, whether it's reduce the size of vehicles, or have a, you know, number of feet back, whatever. We, we just, I would love to see something.
Could, could, could we find out what the impact would be if we, uh, if we moved the, um, the handicap parking? Um, in terms of costs?
We'll lose a lot of parking.
It's gonna be a huge impact.
And how many park, how many parking spaces are we talking about are handicapped? That are those specifics? Cause they can say sixty-two in here. I didn't count specifically, but that's the report. How many of those sixty-two are handicapped? And what does that really mean? I'd like to see that.
Okay, you gotta say to this, or in that?
Can we bring that, uh, that, when we gather that information at like forty, fifty parking places?
Yeah, the number's easy, and then I'll give Maxine and see what it.
It's a ballpark figure.
It would have been cost roughly, uh.
And if Maxine, uh, if, if any Maxine can, can figure out some other ways, maybe signage is stamped rather than a sign or something?
We have, we have painted stamps on the surface. All our handicap parking spaces are painted blue with the white stencil on the ground. They have the signage. They're all standards that we have to follow through the mud coat, the standards. The manual of uniform traffic control standard, which is through the Federal Highway Administration, which every city follows. That's, that's how we know what, how and what size signs to go on different minor, major arterial streets. We are, we are directed through that. That's, I, I just can't send anybody out and say, go put up a stop sign. They put one three foot in the air. Stop signs are supposed to be put seven feet from the bottom of the sign to the ground. Two foot minimum off the side of the roadway. two foot minimum off the side of the roadway. You have standards that we have to follow so that they all are uniform in in one design.
What if we don't follow those standards? What if we ignore them and just say, hey, we're aware of them, but we don't care? Any consequences?
That's a random question. He's our attorney.
It opens. What's it do? So we ignore them?
I know we had trouble getting ODOT funding because we weren't in compliance with some of the stuff.
And if if you drive down any state highway out here, Division, Noble, and you notice, you'll notice every one of their stop signs are set behind our crosswalks. Where there is sidewalks, where where there is pedestrian traffic, being directed out into the street.
Is it possible, it sounds like there's several things that we're not in compliance in. Is it possible we get a report on or maybe a plan, some plan ideas, like in the next few years, if we could maybe work on these certain things to get us closer to compliance? I mean, because it's not just that, it's all sorts of things. We're probably not in compliance federally, right, in streets and stuff? Can we create a plan and we can say, well, this is how much it might cost, and these are low-hanging fruit, let's get these easier ones and then see, does that make sense?
Yes.
Is that possible to start thinking about?
Well, we have started thinking about that because we're we're working on a a street map, and so that would kinda fall into our ADA compliance issues. That will be probably the next thing that we're required to do at some point.
Could we get a report on where that's at and just to get us interested?
We can work on it.
Whenever you feel like you could do it, but we need to know more about where you're going with it.
Sure.
Great.
Okay.
And what's, so is this, are the staff gonna work on that or?
We have some homework that's gonna be accomplished.
Yeah.
Super, thank you.
Okay, all right.